All right, so we'll call the meeting to order at six o'clock on the dot. And I'll note that a non-public session can be called out at any time in accordance with chapter ninety-one A, section three-two, A, B, C, D, E, or I. And then that brings us to public input. We don't have members of the public now, but maybe what we'll do is we'll go to the meeting minutes and then we'll come back and we'll bring you up in the agenda like I had mentioned with that email. All right, so approval of meeting minutes. Does anybody have any comments on the meeting minutes, either the public or non-public?
I actually don't this time. I always have something and I don't.
I, uh...
My name is misspelled a couple of times. I don't, like, I'm not a c- so I don't know if it matters or not.
Yeah, we'll correct it.
Okay. One time it was two T's instead of a D-T.
Let's make it consistent.
There's many ways to spell it, so...
One thing that I had a question on is, it's page eight, it's the top of the, um, PDI materials. It says Qual Check. I was thinking it's Qual Tricks, but I...
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so I will make a motion to approve the public meeting minutes as amended and the non-public meetings as drafted. Does anybody second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Okay, so what I wanted to do is just jump down on the agenda and start at new business. And we will hear about the energy upgrade. So, great to have both of you here. Thanks for joining.
Yeah, scoot right up so we can catch you on, on the mic. That would be great.
Is that the mic?
That is the mic. It'll, it'll catch you pretty well.
So Charlie and I are on the Energy Committee, which started probably, God, you know, some years ago. Yeah, you know, but we have been, um, kind of deluged with opportunities. As you know, Community Power passed, and so that's a biggie. Is that my phone?
One of those persons.
I'm sorry. My phone never rings. But, one of our desires on the Energy Committee is, obviously, to help the town as much as possible to, um, you know, avail itself of energy upgrades. And, um, we have had the minister from the church come in and ask for some help with some renovations and grange and all that. We also were contacted by Clean Energy New Hampshire with an idea, um, for the school, if the school is interested. It would be, um, assistance and actually incredibly affordable assistance, um, swapping out your legacy lights for LED lights. And so we are here just to figure out together if that's something that you would like us to help you look into as a possibility. You have no idea how the politics works, whether, you know, how much autonomy you have in terms of what happens in, in the physical building. We were told that that might be an issue with the SAU, et cetera. But anyway, we'll tell you what we've learned and, um, it's pretty exciting. We're not here blogging anybody or, you know, whatever. We're just, um, sharing an idea.
Yeah, we want to get a, a sense of where you guys are, whether you've had any thoughts about, um, energy upgrades. A lot of them over the years have, have come through town. I've been here for about three years, but I know there have been solarized campaigns and, uh, campaigns to switch out light bulbs. So, we don't want to come barging in with things that you've already considered and, and rejected, but there are some programs out there that we've scratched the surface of a little bit, uh, for, um, other buildings in town as well. And, um, they're through New Hampshire Saves, where you actually get a, um, a rebate in terms of, they, they would come in and do an evaluation, um, and it was an opportunity for a pretty significant rebate on that. And then the cost savings are, are pretty incredible down the line. They're talking seventy to eighty percent, um, soft, uh, savings, um, over, over time. So, but really, if you can get over that initial, um, purchase help, and they, they provide money for that. And then there is another, uh, so that's NH Saves, they work with the utilities, work with Unitel to come up with a plan. And, um, and then there's another group out of Dover, uh, that's pretty intriguing. It's a company that makes the light bulbs themselves, so it's locally produced, veteran employed, uh, group, and they've worked with a number of school systems. And they come in, um, do an audit, do a, a plan for you, work with the utilities, try to get the best program there. And then there's no, um, budget impact for you. You pay them back out of your savings over time. So it's a very unique...
Pretty interesting.
Kind of, kind of program. They're called Affinity. So those are a couple of ideas that we've, we've, uh, researched. I know there's some seed grants out there periodically. Uh, we're happy to help however we can in terms of we have some time, you know, we'll see retired volunteers who have some skills and, um, happy to help bring that forward, knowing that you are the decision makers and, you know, in charge of all of that.
I don't think there's any downside to having people investigate stuff for us, and I'm a big fan of the retired volunteers.
Yeah, that was one question I asked, whether or not those audits from either of those two companies are free. I imagine they would be, but...
Yeah.
Okay.
They are, and the audits can be, um, just for lighting. And, you know, sometimes when they're looking at the lighting, they say, "Yeah, that was Civil War era, whatever, that probably should get replaced as well," so that there might be some of that kind of dialogue, but it would be a very, um, interactive process that they go through. And then others, um, so that's on the lighting side. I think the NH Saves with utilities would come in and, um, the audit is free, but they could also potentially say, "And that furnace is on its last legs." You might be starting to think about something about it else. So it's really up to you how, how broad you, you want to go. I always find it's good to have the information even if it's...
Yeah, exactly.
Becky, has there ever been an energy audit here?
Um, we have, and, um, we, we, um, switched out all the lights in the building in twenty eighteen to LEDs, so...
Oh, okay.
We, we did that, and it was a, a lovely cost of things that we saw right away that very first year. So we've been able to benefit from that for a while. So right now, the lights that are on, actually only half the bank of lights are on because the LEDs are so efficient.
Substantious.
Yeah, um, we saw the largest shift, um, when we were able to, um, change out the bulbs in our multipurpose room because they're such substantial fixtures, um, and being able to change those was actually really, really helpful. So, those, those, all those little things do make a difference. Um, I was actually, as you're speaking, and I'm trying not to be rude while you're speaking, I'm trying to pull up, um, when we have had audits done before, just so that we could kind of talk about what we've had done and maybe what is, what we haven't had done that we could think about doing now, because I feel like there's always options to be more efficient, um, with our utilities.
Even on the lighting side, I think there, there's technology that shuts lights off.
Yeah, the motion sensors and that sort of thing too, which at the time, we, um, opted not to do at that time. But I know that some of the other buildings in SAU do have the motion sensors on their lights. Just try, I was trying to listen and find...
Do that, and I can...
I knew you were gonna ask, "What have we done?" So, and I wasn't prepared for the question, so...
So are you looking up like a top, about a couple of other things?
Okay, yes.
So, we did look at investigating solar here.
Okay.
Uh, we had a presentation from Re- Revision came in. We looked at different possibilities of a lease, or if it would be a, a sole doing that. The one issue was the transformer that was outside, so that was a major overhaul that we would have to work with Unitel to get the transformer to be able to take any type of solar.
Really?
Yeah, 'cause the, the other part we looked at is air conditioning throughout this building, and, uh, we do not have the capacity to run air conditioning throughout the entire building based on the transformer that's outside. Um, one thing that we are doing in regards to solar though, that, um, you'll get a preview, is that we're working with, uh, Freedom Energy, and we, because they work with Unitel, we're going to do solar net metering next year. And so every school within SAU sixteen that is working with Unitel will get a percentage back based on the kilowatt hours that they use for their, their electricity as a revenue next year. So, that is something that we put in store, so that's nine out of our eleven buildings are Unitel buildings, and so it's a large, uh, electrical outage that we'll get, but then we get a revenue based on the amount of, we have here based on percentage. So, that is something we looked at. But, the part that I think Becky will look up is the audit we did with EEI that looked at a lot of different efficiencies, our HVAC, our boiler, um, a lot of our mechanicals in the building. That was probably seven or eight years ago, right Becky?
I'm thinking twenty seventeen, if I'm looking at this correctly, yeah.
And then the last couple of years, what we've been doing...
Mike Davy.
In all of our buildings is bringing our full facilities team from SAU sixteen, so that covers our, uh, plumbing, heating, um, construction crew, uh, electrical, working through and looking at all of our systems just internally so that we have it. I don't think it hurts to have someone outside to do that. We've been trying to not have a cost with that, so if we have free audits to give us background, I think that'd be great, but that energy inefficiencies has been something that we've been really looking at because we have so many buildings in SAU sixteen, but how does that play into Kensington as well?
That's excellent.
Yes, so we, in twenty seventeen, we had, um, EME Systems and Energy Efficient Investments, um, do the investment grade audit for us, and so, um, we looked at, we considered and looked at things like, um, the LED control upgrades, um, ERV, um, heating, um, new ceilings and center cores, um, additional insulation projects, exterior ERVs. So, those were some of the examples of, um, their proposed projects that would help us with some of our, um, utility costs.
And then from that, we, you generated a very nice five-year, uh, facilities plan to do replacements on stuff that came out of that audit, but also the necessary things. And we've completed, I think, pretty much majority of those that were not super significant costing.
Yeah, I think the, the one big project that we, we didn't really entertain in conversation too much was the conversion from oil to gas. And that, that's obviously a substantial project, um, to consider, and, um, that was, I think that's one that never made it on a five or ten-year plan, that was, um, something for us to think about, but...
Wow, I'm really proud of Kensington.
They're hitting it out of the park.
This is wonderful. Yeah, that's wonderful. So, um, the idea of doing another audit, if it were financially feasible, would be appealing if nothing has happened since two thousand seventeen or eighteen?
That was the last time we had an outside person, yeah, come and do an audit, yeah.
Yeah, we can look into that to see how, I think we can help you out there. And the LED, the fact that you've done that already, well, there goes our idea for...
Unless they do, um, an audit to say, "We've got these things since twenty eighteen" that might have low budget consequence and might make it even more efficient. It sounds like you've come a long way.
And that's up to you. The audit is free and the estimate is free, so essentially free information.
Sure.
We'll just double check with NH Saves and make sure that our audit is free and the lighting one is, is free. And they could look at those things, uh, while they're in there, but if we ask them directly to say, "We'll, we'll plot it all," systems.
I would imagine insulation is probably part of the New Hampshire Saves one too. Do, do we, do we know if there's been anything insulation-wise that we've had to do here?
No, we haven't, that's not been an, an issue or anything on our, our to-do list.
Yeah, they, they only, just small, in a, not in a broad sense, but when they replaced the, um, the unit in the kindergarten wing, um, just surround, just surrounding that unit up there in the attic.
Okay.
But it wasn't a full, like, it wasn't the whole wing. It was just around the system.
Yep. Okay.
So, I mean, that is certainly something, 'cause, that we could, you know, look at for sure, was additional insulation and some of the ceiling, um, is the exact ceiling proposals that we had been looking to do potentially this summer anyway.
Yep.
So you can kind of perhaps do both, both of those.
Okay.
So you're planning on doing some ceiling work this summer?
Um, yes, as long as we're cleared with roof leaks. I'm not gonna replace ceilings until I'm certain the roof leak is set first, so... One has to happen before the other.
So solar is out because of the transformer issue?
Well, that was one of the big part, but also was the cost. And we would have to bond, we, I would make the recommendation that Kensington bonded rather than having someone bond it for us, because then we're not eligible for the thirty percent, uh, investment tax credit. And that was a huge sell that we just did in Brentwood, so Brentwood is gonna go solar next year on their roof, but it was because, it took us about two and a half years to get to that point, but that's a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar check coming back to us, right? So that would be a big thing here. I don't, I wouldn't want an outside vendor, we'd get it, but they get the, the tax credit, so...
Right, right.
Yeah, so how we would be able to bond that would be significant, and where our budget has been the last couple of years, putting that on, the last year was not something we could consider.
Yeah, our thinking was to help you find sources, other sources of grants and so on that might take these things out of, uh, any kind of a budget impact, minor budget impact.
Right.
Okay.
So we can take a look at, um, getting another, um, audit and who would we deal with or have suggest that they get contact? Probably to me?
Yeah, between the two of us, because, I mean, I do work with all the other schools in regards to facilities, so I would love to be able, if there's other schools, we could have them connect with, but between Becky and I for Kensington would be great.
Excellent. Do you mind telling me your name again?
Yeah, I am Chris Andriski, C-H-R-I-S. Last name A-N-D-R-I-S-K-I. And I'm at C Andriski at SAU16.org.
Great, thank you. This is, this is wonderful to have this opportunity to talk to all of you.
Thank you for coming.
And collect all this information, and we hope we can help you.
Yes, I'm all about saving money. Because then I get to spend what we save.
There it is.
On other good things for kids.
With the community power, it should be about a twenty percent decrease in the bill.
Yeah, we should see some savings for sure.
You're not for party, you're, you're Unitel.
Yep. We are.
Yeah, that's great.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Well, it's good to see you, Sue.
Nice to see you.
I know, I haven't seen you in a hundred years. Well, except for at the polls. We always turn up when we vote, but, yeah.
This is true.
Yeah, when we vote the right way. Thank you so much, you guys. Yeah, pretty soon you'll be one of the retirees, Barbara. The volunteer retirees. You're gonna, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Hi, thank you.
All right, while we're on new business, I thought maybe we could just finish up the topic and talk about the June board meeting.
Yeah.
Time change?
Oh, um, just with the, uh, approval of the calendar for the last day, it shifts, um, our fifth grade celebration to the night of when our next school board would be. So, um, kind of two parts to this question. One, is there any member of the board that would like to participate in that ceremony in helping to, um, pass out certificates and awards? You're certainly welcome to represent that evening.
What is the date, Eric?
The twelfth.
It's Wednesday, June twelfth.
Yeah, no, I'm teaching that, no.
So I guess we have a, a couple of choices. We, uh, that, that ceremony generally starts at six, um, so we can look to shift the start time of the board meeting or just choose another day entirely, I suppose, if that's easier, but...
Do we wanna, would it be too much to try and squeeze the school board meeting in before that?
Before? We could, is it too much? You're, not, yes, it's too much or no?
Listen, if I don't have to be on another day, I would, you tell me, if we wanna go early, we can go early.
I wanna say we did something similar last year. Could be taking more different...
We did it after.
We did it after.
Okay.
But I think we could squeeze an hour if we'd started at five. I'm not gonna have a ton.
Yeah.
Right.
Especially if you get through policy tonight.
And that you wouldn't be rushed to do it tonight.
Yeah. We won't have any policies for next month.
Yeah.
We are literally gonna talk about, uh, schedule, and there's a couple other things on there, but it shouldn't be a...
All right, well, maybe we just...
I might have to squeak out a little early, 'cause I'm teaching a grad course, I mean... I'll just tell you how I'm gonna vote and you vote for me.
It'll keep us to getting out at six.
All right, so we'll just shift five to six?
Yep.
I just might have to scoot just a tiny before that, just as people are arriving, getting set up, but I think we can do it quickly.
Do we need, we don't need to vote on that change, right?
Nope, just a directive, yeah.
Okay, all right, let's just shift it to five to six.
Okay.
Are you available to do the, the comments you wanted to go?
Yeah. Thank you.
Were we talking about just kinda handing them out and...
Yes.
Okay.
Unless you would like to speak, I can certainly add you to that. It's really...
I think the chair has given a speech the last...
Like, only for like a half hour, right?
A half hour, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so jumping back up to committee reports, Policy Committee. Meeting that we had following our last board meeting was, it was a good one. There was a lot of back and forth between the policies, just given the topics themselves, but, um, four new policies, all required under regulation, student code of conduct, student discipline, due process, use of restraints and seclusion, so those three are essentially connected with one another, and then wellness, nutrition, and physical activity. And then finally, the fifth was a revision to an existing policy, which is just based on meal charging, and the reason why we looked at it is because we need to review the policy periodically, so, one of those that we just wanted to fit in and make sure that we gave a look at. All of these policies were very lengthy. The idea is to bring as much transparency to these topics, which are pretty tricky and have a lot to them, so, wanted to be as transparent as possible. I don't know that there's too much more that I wanna comment on. I think the summary does a nice job of calling out the key details within each policy, but happy to talk to you in questions if anybody has.
I think majority of those changes too were based on RSA too, so it's not a lot that you can change, right?
Exactly, and I mean, we even, we kicked around a few things that we felt like needed to be pushed on a little bit, but it, you're right, I mean, everything is, is required under law.
Right.
The stuff that we were tweaking and pushing was more stylistic than anything else.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And then we have two water bottle, bottle filling stations at KES already, so we know we're meeting that requirement and that change.
Yeah, and as noted within the summary, we did talk about the other, or the related policy not too long ago, but this one just is far more substantial and included a lot of work from the Wellness Committee to populate. Okay. So, I will make a motion to approve JIC, JICD, JKAA, JLCF, and EFAA as drafted. Does anybody second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
All right, so Cheryl, you're next up, Safety and Security?
It's gonna be real quick, we haven't met ever. But I feel really safe. Now, we're meeting on the, I think it's the twenty-third.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm really excited about it.
All right, Superintendent Evaluation Committee?
Um, we're meeting tomorrow. I submitted our evaluation that we did last time, last meeting, um, and we are meeting tomorrow in person with, um, Dr. Aspel to go over all of the, um, results from the different...
Okay. Okay. And school study update?
Nothing on that.
Any general correspondence?
Only that Community Power, uh, we'll include that if you want in a minute that came through.
Okay. And community news, I think we have some time to work, but... All right, business and financials.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You all received your, your financial act a little late this month. We were getting information out of the new software and making sure things were right. So, you started, you had remaining expense at your last board meeting of two-hundred-and-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars. You spent an additional nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. You'll see a lot of encumbrance adjustments as we transfer things over from the new system, from the old system to the new system, as far as, um, salary lines, um, and also as it's, we're reaching the end of the year, close to the end of the year, we are adjusting encumbrances down. We don't need as much for electricity or fuel and things like that, so you're gonna see those kind of adjustments. And then we did have some additional substitutes as we tend to do at this time of year also. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Can you just remind me when the fiscal year ends?
Fiscal year end is June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, okay.
Yeah, that's our fiscal year, July one to June thirtieth.
Okay, got it. So, it looks like we're gonna have a pretty big chunk of change to go back into the fund balances.
We do. So, right now, you have remaining unspent budget of a hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-seven-fifty-five, and we have received a little bit more revenues than we had expected to. I love that. So, yes, so we are anticipating, if nothing changes, which we know things do, um, two-hundred-and-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-two as a fund balance at the end of the year, and then with your trusts up twenty-five, we anticipate, again, with no changes, a hundred-and-eighty-four, three-ninety-two going back to the, to the town.
Okay, and what about, this might be more for Becky and Chris, but what about pre-buy opportunities, like, we kinda, like, is there anything else within that remaining balance that...
So that we, we have a list.
That's next on our list!
We have, we have some ideas, though, with that's there.
Okay, all right, great.
Good. But yes, with pre-buyers are something that we have done before, we pre-bought oil.
Yeah, all right. Okay. Any other questions? Great, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
All right, food service procurement process.
Yeah, you signed off on that for me, thank you, Josh. Just a change, uh, in June about how we have to, um, follow federal guidelines in regards to what we're buying and how we buy for a federal food lunch program. So just by signing that and talking about it today, we're gonna follow those rules and regulations, so Gene Pierce, who kinda oversees everything for SAU sixteen, works very closely with, uh, Ms. Plard, so, um, we are very confident that that will continue to happen on the up and up.
Got it.
Thank you. We give that top one to Sharon as well. Thank you.
Becky, you wanna talk about that principals report?
Sure, yeah, I just went through it and then cracked it here, it's like all the way towards the end. There we go. So the first thing that I wrote about under, um, positive community culture was the K2 launching their micro-society unit, and speaking back from, um, break, and, um, we're bringing back Market Day, which kinda went on hiatus for a good five years. Yeah, so, um, Market Day was a longstanding KES tradition where children would sell their wares that they had made, and, um, we are excited to bring that back. Barbara, do you wanna talk a little bit about, like, just relaunching this with kindergartners?
Yeah, it's great. For kindergarten, we're also studying the, the community itself, Kensington, so we're talking about goods and services that happen in town, and we're visiting a few, and then we brought it into the classroom, and we're also studying frogs as part of our science. So, they took a vote, we had to come up and we had boys... So, they took a vote. We had come up and we had boys in what we wanted to name our town. And it came down to, we're now called Froggy Town. And then we had a ballot where they all voted on what goods they wanted to make. And so, we've talked about, you know, we're gonna have to pay the bills for things that we have to buy and sell. And they really have jumped right on board, and they're so excited to do the projects. And as things have been donated, they're like, oh, can we do it today? I'm like, okay, first we gotta get all the products. Um, but just hearing them use some of the language like, oh, is that the goods we're selling? You know, they're already picking up on that. Um, and the excitement builds as they get older because they have more responsibilities. Like, when they're in second grade, they're, they have to pay, like, taxes in their classroom and all sorts of things like that. So it's, it's a lot of fun. The kids are really into it right now.
That's great.
Yeah, it's exciting to have all that, like, basic economic language alive. And they're understanding what it means at their level, you know, for five and six and seven-year-olds. They're engaging in it in a way that makes sense to them, and it's a lot of fun, so. So that's way better than what I wrote. Um, under meaningful learning, I was, um, highlighting, um, the project that our students are doing, um, with Seap perch. Um, and this is something that we, um, we're able to order these kits with grant money. Um, and the fifth graders have started building their ROVs, their remotely operated vehicles that they are going to, um, be attempting to submerge at the pool at PEA next week, I think it's next week. So, they, they've been really impressed. Um, the Seap perch representatives have come a couple times to work with the, the fifth graders. Um, they had never worked with a group this, this young before. Um, and they've really knocked it out of the park. So they were really impressed with what the fifth graders could do with these kits. So, um, kudos to our kids with, you know, their scientific knowledge. And a kudos to Ms. McCarthy, you know, bringing that up all through the years in them. I think, I'm not sure I've met a kid in Kensington that doesn't love science, to be honest. And I, a lot of kudos to Sarah for that one.
And Becky, you said they're, they're kinda like kits, so they have to, like, build them and then maybe customize them somehow?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so they don't all look the same, for sure. Um, they do have some, the, the motors and some things are, are obviously the same. They have some of the same parts, but the actual, um, rovers do not all look the same, so.
Okay, that's great.
It's pretty exciting. There's, I mean, there's soldering and...
Really?
Um, yeah, it's neat. It's really cool. So hopefully that goes well and, um, yeah, can have them maybe demonstrate. Okay, I'll bring them over to Barbara's pool and have them learn. Um, and under health and wellbeing, um, I was highlighting, um, a, a new night that we're, they're launching here in, at the end of May, um, for Mental Health Awareness Month. Um, and this has been coordinated by Nurse Heather, um, and also supported by our art teacher, Sarah Sheffield. And they've been working on, um, you know, art, in art class, just really, um, as an expression of themselves. And then we've worked with Seacoast Mental Health, um, to have a representative there that night to be able to talk with families too, just about life and stressors and everything facing young families this, this time of year. And, um, just hoping it will benefit everyone, um, you know, with the art show. And then some information from Seacoast Mental Health as well. So, it's been a nice combined event. I know the spring is really hard to try to find a night where everybody's not at lacrosse and baseball and softball. It's almost impossible, but we'll give it our best shot. Yeah, so that's what I have under the principals' report, under our core values. And then I think we have special education is what we're talking about tonight. Um, so as you know, each month we dive into different, um, data sets. So we're gonna talk a little bit about special education. And before we got into the numbers, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood the process of special education. And so what would happen first is if there is, um, a suspected disability with a child and whether that's, um, the teacher suspecting something or the family is suspecting something. It starts with that conversation of what do we feel like might be, what, what's the barrier? What are, what's impeding the learning? So we talk first about that conversation of disability. Um, and then a referral would be made to our special education team. From there, we would conduct evaluations to then determine whether a child would be eligible to receive special education services. Um, if they are found to be eligible, then we develop what's called an IEP or Individualized Education Plan that has specific goals for that child based on their, um, particular needs. Um, and then we determine placement. Um, and obviously, um, we try to place everyone here at Kensington and meet their needs here. On occasion, there are students for whom we can't meet their needs here and we need to consider placing them elsewhere in order to meet their needs. Um, and then obviously ongoing monitoring. So it is, it is a lengthy process. It usually takes several months from beginning to end, um, from when the referral is made until an IEP implementation. So it's, it's a time commitment and personnel commitment, um, if we enter into that special ed process. So on the next page is, um, just current numbers. So the, this is our current special education population at KES. And that means as of today, because it is fluid. So children go in and out of eligibility for special education services. So, um, we have new students, some students who are newly eligible and other students for whom we're exiting because they're no longer eligible. So it is a fluid number throughout the year. Right now, as of today, we have twenty-five student, twenty-five out of our hundred and forty-two students are identified, um, under the special education process. So that's seventeen point six percent of our population. And you can see how that compares to the SAU average, New Hampshire average, and national average. So, um, a little below SAU and New Hampshire and a little above national average. Um, the next page, um, is sort of a timeline over the years to see how our special education numbers fluctuate. Um, and it goes up and down.
Does the criteria remain, for the most part, the same across that time span too?
Um... I'm trying to think, looking at two thousand and sixteen. There was a shift towards not using what's called a discrepancy model, although you still can use a discrepancy model for identification. Um, but there was a shift away from that. I, I can't tell you exactly when that happened.
Did there change too for what required developmental delay?
Well, the individual categories of eligibility have shifted a bit. And I'll, we'll talk a little bit about the, the categories.
Okay.
Um, but the overall is there, there has to be a, um, a disability that's impacting progress in the general curriculum. So we have to have data to show that, that that is the reason why progress isn't being made and it's not due to any other factors.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's our sort of trends up and down in special ed numbers, um, over the last eight years or so. Um, and then the next page is a comparison of our, um, special education population as compared to the other SAU sixteen schools. So again, we're kind of right in the middle of the pack. Higher than some schools, lower than others, so. And then, um, we're looking then by grade level. Um, the number of students currently receiving special education at each of these grade levels. Um, and then, um, this page is the eleven categories in the state of New Hampshire for which students can qualify for special education. And then the percentages, the percentage here at Kensington of students qualified under that category. So, um, again, this is where some of these categories have changed over the years and the criteria to be eligible under these categories have changed.
So something like a developmental delay, that could be technically something that a student grows out of and maybe doesn't need an IEP at a certain grade level.
Yeah, so we, often developmental delay is used with our youngest students because at that age, sometimes it is difficult to tease out exactly what is getting in the way of the learning. So there could be some, some speech delays, there could be motor delays. There, there could be several different things happening for our young students and it's hard for us to pinpoint until they get a little bit older exactly, um, what the disability, what the primary disability would be. Um, students can only carry an identification of developmental delay until they're nine. And then, then you have to consider a different category at that point.
Okay. And something like a specific learning disability, or are there any examples there?
So that could be a specific learning disability in reading, um, where a child might, um, you know, number sense might be fine, their mathematical concepts might be fine, but their specific learning disability may be just in the area of reading, or vice versa. Their specific learning disability could just be in the area of math, um, but not in reading.
Okay.
So. Um, and then the final page is, um, the special education staff that's required to support the students and the services that are on the, on IEPs here in the building. So, we currently have, um, two full-time case managers, um, that are divvied up between the grade levels. A full-time speech and language pathologist. Um, our occupational therapist is here point eight, and then, um, she is our preschool coordinator for point two at the time. Um, we have a physical therapist here one day a week. Um, we have an ASL interpreter, a licensed nursing assistant. Um, and then five and a half pair of professionals. And it's not that we have a half person, they're just here half-timing. Um, additionally, we have special education contracted services, which means these people are not Kensington employees, but we contract with them on an hourly basis to come in and provide supports, either directly to students or consultation to our staff and teachers.
So those two case managers at the top are essentially going to think about and manage cases with any of the components that exist below?
Yes, as well as direct teaching. So that's why it says case manager slash special education teacher. So if there's specific interventions, academic interventions, they are also directly providing that to the student.
Okay.
So they wear two hats.
Alright, I believe that came up in a recent meeting where we talked a little bit about that.
Yeah.
I don't remember specifically the, the points that were discussed there, but I just remember hearing about it then.
Yes, and as individual education plans are given to each student, the teams that support those plans are different.
Yeah.
So some teams are larger than others, which obviously takes more management and coordination. So that's our current.
Yeah, thanks Becky, this is really helpful to see. Sheds a lot of light on what happens with the special ed process, so I appreciate that. Thank you. So we covered new business, our business ad hoc budget, budget committee update.
Oh, yes, I, um, who was serving, I can't remember. Was it you, Josh, that was gonna do it?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so I tentatively proposed, um, Monday, June third at five o'clock. Does that work for you? I sent an email to Mr. Brandano to see if that worked for him, since he was an important member of the committee. And that did work for him.
Yeah.
Great, and I, um, I sent the, I'll call out to families. I did receive two volunteers for the committee, so we are fully stocked, we're ready to go. Yeah, so I'll send an official invitation, so we're looking at Monday, June third, five o'clock. Awesome.
And that's obviously gonna be here, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you for that. Uh, pupil-related matters.
Do we have any pupil-related matters?
They're all amazing.
Personnel?
We do, unfortunately, have, um, several letters of resignation of staff members who are not planning to, um, return next year. Um, the first would be, um, Mr. Brackett is not claiming to return. Um, he'll be finishing out his contract this year. Um, so we'll be needing to post that, um, immediately, actually, to get that going as his last day will actually be May thirty-first. So, um, we'll get that going. I also regretfully, um, am announcing that Ms. Noseworthy is not going to be continuing in music. Um, we've had a lovely gift of having her this year, but I think she's actually finally ready to be a full-time Grammy. Okay, she's come in and out of retirement a few times, but I think she's actually ready this time, so. We'll wish her well, um, being full-time Grammy. And, um, one of our kitchen support workers, Karen Clark, um, is also, um, not returning and is going to be full-time Grammy and full-time Grammy childcare next year for her daughter, so. Can't argue with that either.
Okay.
Um, so we do have a few holes to fill, so we'll be needing to post those positions and get the hiring process going.
How long has Mr. Brackett been here for?
Five years.
Five years, okay.
Six years.
Five, five, yeah, coming right after me.
Five, five years.
Can we talk about our possibility of how we wanna post that position?
So, yes, we are, um, and we talked with Rusty, who's the, um, SAU, um, Director of Maintenance. We did talk about shifting that position back to being a, um, daytime custodian. That's what the position was ten years ago when I started. Um, and at that time, I shifted it to more of a facilities focus, because there was a lot of facility issues that needed to be addressed and I needed somebody with those skills to be able to do that. I mean, you know, we have done a lot of work on this facility in the last ten years. It's something that I'm actually really proud of. We are in a really good place right now and have completed a, most of the things on that original list. And I feel like we're in a good place to shift back to that being a more of a custodial position. Um, and now that Mr. Lister has an assistant facilities director, which he's never had at the SAU level, that assistant facilities person will be able to oversee the facilities part of what we need here. So I'm feeling pretty comfortable about that shift because I know we'll have more support from the SAU to do the facilities part. Um, and the daytime piece could be more custodial focused, so. It makes a difference on how we post the position, 'cause you're really looking for different skills.
Sure.
And we run that model, and it runs really well. Rusty will take over, care of all the facilities pieces and coordinate, uh, with their custodians. Custodians still report to, to Becky during the day, deal with problems. And then John would come over here to help out, meet with, with vendors, uh, do quotes, things of that nature. It's a model that works, and I think it would help us continue to be efficient with, with different vendors and, and people we're using. So I'm very comfortable with, with that shift where, where we're at with the building.
Great.
Great.
With that, I think that goes well into what we were looking at with regards to facilities. Um, so Josh, you talked about, you know, um, like, pre-buying and it's not, I wouldn't say this is pre-buying, but trying to get things done on our short-term, um, facilities repair replacement list early. I just emailed it to you all again as, as a reference. So, it's alright. So that would go up to sixty.
Yeah.
Um, so Becky and I met on Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, 'cause we knew that we were starting to get this large, uh, end-of-the-year fund balance. And we were thinking that if we could start plugging away, so some of the facilities needs, that would, would free up our budget for next year and the following year. Uh, so Becky put together a list, and I added something today, 'cause I, I didn't, we didn't know the true amount until we got it this afternoon. Um, but we would, we would like to ask that if the board would allow us to approve to spend up to sixty thousand dollars, it will allow us to get things such as our SEL resources in, 'cause we're doing more with SEL and, and, uh, materials that will be needed for all of our students. Work on replacing all the windows rather than three. When we did budget last year, we only talked about doing three, now we can do all five.
Right.
Uh, we talked about finishing the air duct cleaning. They cleaned the air ducts in the, in the multipurpose room because of the ERV that's going up on top of the roof, but doing the rest, 'cause that hadn't been done in a while.
It's in, right, it's, it's in the budget for next year, but pulling that out early.
Um, doing the drop ceilings, and Becky can talk more about that, and the rooms that you'll be doing that in.
Yeah, and so that's what I was referencing when the women were here talking about the, um, insulation, the drop ceilings. So there are two rooms that I would like to do the drop ceilings, as long as I'm sure the roofs, the leaks are fixed. Um, because it... as long as I'm sure the roofs, the leaks are fixed, because it was both from the energy standpoint of dropping the ceilings and then with the additional insulation. So that was a project that's sort of been on our to-do list for a while, but we pulled it out in this budget season when we were trying to, you know, reduce costs. So I'd love to be able to put it back in, if we can do that. Yeah, the windows are also, that's, we pulled that out of the budget as well. And the SEL is actually a new curriculum we're looking to adopt, and I've asked the committee of teachers that's been piloting to come to the June school board meeting to, to give you a presentation on the program that we'd like to move forward with. So you'll get more information about that at the June meeting. Yeah, per policy, any new curriculum adoption needs to come to the board, and so I've asked them to come in June to, to give that to, so, yeah.
And then the last thing is I added...
You added that one.
I added the doors. So the doors are at the point where if we continue, they're, they're good, and we had them for two years, but as I'm seeing in other facilities, if we can replace doors sooner, it is efficient in regards to your insulation, your heating cost, and, and also safety. We found a couple doors that we had lapsed in facilities, and they're starting to rot out. And now we're having to replace not just the doors, but the whole wheel wall, and it's, it's a lot more work. So I'd rather get ahead of that, so that's why I added it there.
We've replaced all three of our front doors, just in the last couple years, which are tremendously nice.
Wasn't that on one of the safety audits too?
Yeah, we, and we have, slowly we've been picking away, and that we just, we haven't, we haven't done all of them yet.
Okay, can I just talk through for a second the implications of spending this money versus how it ties in with the budget? So the budget, we're set, we agreed, we passed on that. We're obviously thinking about all these expenses in connection with the budget. This piece of cash that we have now is essentially items that leave us under budget, so it's around $180,000 if everything goes to plan. And by taking measures like what we're talking about here, what that would essentially do is pull back from some of the money that the taxpayers would receive if we did nothing else. But at the same time, this was already money budgeted for various items related to the school. So what we're doing here is using that money for the original intended purpose, but essentially, using that, that, that difference in what would otherwise be a rebate to continue hammering away at the budgeted items. Does that...
Yeah, so these are all things that are gonna appear in our budget, whether we do it this year, it's, if we don't do it this year, it's gonna appear in our budget next year. So either way, we're gonna budget for these things at some point.
Well, it's not gonna get cheaper.
Exactly. So we approved the budget, then, we have some leftovers, we approved the budget here, but we have this piece that, you got some going back to the taxpayers. However, the other portions of that tax or that cash can be spent and, and used to essentially do what it was originally intended to do. It's just a weird kind of breakout in the sense, because we didn't hit the budget completely 100% last year.
And then it is significantly higher than the year prior, what we're returning to the town, almost about $60,000 probably when we're said and done. So it'll be a, a nice reduction or a piece of a reduction to the taxpayers.
Yeah.
And also meeting the needs of the facility, you know.
Yeah, okay. Alright, just wanted to talk that through to make sure that I followed it.
And then I guess you, you had brought up pre-buy, if you, if we wanted to look to consider to pre-buy. Oil is what we have traditionally pre-bought in the past.
Yeah. So is that something still to look into for next year?
We can, we can look into that next month, we can see where we are if we're still sitting at this unanticipated balance.
And that was the only, I think we, we talked about reviewing whatever we could, and we landed on oil last time, it's the only one that made sense.
It's because you have to have it spent and work starting before June 30th, because that's when this budget runs out. So that's why this May meeting is really helpful, because then we can now give Joe, before he leaves on the 3rd, start getting these people in here, and get John over to start meeting with them, and we can start getting vendors to come in so that the work is started before June 30th, we get our, our things. The pre-buy on the oil, we can literally call them up the next day and have some pre-boughts.
Send an invoice, yeah. Because some of these, like, the windows take a long time to come in, like, we could order them now and they still might not be in until November, so. Some of those things take a while. Yeah, I think that sounds wise.
Okay, makes sense. Thanks for looking into that additional info.
Do we want a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion if you're comfortable with us, you know, spending up to $60,000 on facilities and curriculum resources.
Yep, so I'll make a motion to permit the SAU to spend up to $60,000 on various resources.
Facilities and curriculum?
Facilities and curriculum.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all we have.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn at 6:56. Anyone in favor?
Aye.